We are in session, it is 2:02 on June 17th, 2020. Call this workshop to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion, please?
I know that we approved the agenda as written.
Further discussion? JJ?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Aye. So this workshop is to discuss 3A, discuss employee salary study. Ms. Smelzer?
Yes, so the last time we met and discussed this, we talked about the comparables, why we had the comparables we did. We talked about basically the things we look at when we're looking at the wage study. You know, obviously the wages, but also supervisory authority and things of that nature. So, the board at that time had... The board at that time had had some questions. They wanted us to come back to complete it, of course, but then also to come back with some comparable data to show if the employee was given the raise that is recommended, how much would that actually be? So, I have that for you today and we're gonna go through that, but we have other stuff to talk about too. So I'm just gonna dive right in, okay? So, some of the things that we had to discuss were... And that the managers are having a difficult time recruiting for employees because of the starting wages. Employees work 40 hours, no longer... The board agreed that employees would work 40 hours, no longer allowed to work 37 and a half. So the numbers that we're gonna talk about reflect your desire on that. The board decided they wanted six steps before longevity begins. They wanted 3% between steps. Coordinators become exempt, and the board wanted to see current wages, as I just mentioned. So just starting a little bit, I'll hit on the first one that I just mentioned, and that is recruitment. For the most part, the study is pretty much in alignment with LGPI. That's the company that we've been contracting with all these years, and they actually did a pretty good job on the more recent job descriptions, is what I'm seeing. But what we are seeing, though, is some of those positions hadn't been adjusted for years, so they were pretty far off. And then, we're also seeing that the starting wages aren't issues. So, just as the manager said, we're having a hard time recruiting because the starting wages are low. When we go through these charts, you're gonna see that usually the As and Bs are the ones that you're gonna see the biggest increase on, which is reflective of the fact that the starting wages are pretty... are off. So, once you're here a couple of years, it seems to be okay, but other than that, the starting wages are a challenge. I just hit on that. So, just as an example, across the board, the A or the B tend to be the ones that are needing the most adjustment. And, just as an example, we recently hired a deputy building inspector. Not sure what his official title is, but he serves as a deputy building inspector. It was Ryan Baxter. And that position, we hadn't used for years. So, we really... So the numbers that were associated with that were way off. When we get into it, you're gonna see that it's 700... The starting wage is $755 below the comparable wage on that one. Ah, JJ. You got it?
Can I reach it? Sorry, I wouldn't on the ball.
So, when we... The... Another point we just mentioned was the work week. So, the board proposed 40 hours, or said they wanted 40 hours. We proposed that to SEIU, which was the union where we were seeing some 37 and a half hour employees. And, it basically affects two people in the clerk's office, two in finance, and I believe it's seven in the assessor's office. So it's not affecting a lot of employees, but we did propose it to SEIU, and they did agree that they would start working the 40-hour work weeks. We still have to sign that, but they did agree to that tentatively. So I mentioned to you that the board had approved six steps, so this is the chart that you approved. We had proposed different number of steps, different types of longevity, and different percentages between steps. And the board said they wanted six steps, they wanted 3% between each step. Longevity would kick in at seven, and we'd have two longevity columns. One would be at 2.5%, and one would be at 3.5%. And we're gonna see some challenges with this, and some complaints, basically, which makes sense as we go along. And that is, you know, you're coming along, you're 3%, 3%, 3%, you're doing really good, you hit that seventh year, and your reward is you get a half percent cut in pay. But I think our... If I remember right, our thought was at the time, "But you'll make up for it, because the incentive is hang in there, because now you're gonna go from 3% to 3.5%." But like I said, some of the employees aren't happy about that. So, the concerns, the six steps, after five years... Currently, after five years, the employees can collect longevity. That's what our current chart says. So, we have the six steps, but at year five, you start collecting it. Under the new one, longevity doesn't start till seven. One of the comments was, "Employees are maxing out too soon." My solution is, and if the board would be okay with it, it's up to the board, is to change longevity in year seven to 3.25% versus 2.5. It allows the employees to continue to escalate, maybe at a lower or slower rate, but at least they're still getting that reward. What do you guys think about that?
I'm for it.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just gonna say something about... I lost it. That's okay. It'll come back one day.
I guess if the... I'll just stop right here, because if the board is in general consensus with this, this will affect the charts when we finalize them, so we'd wanna know that.
Oh. I remember what I was gonna say. The steps, so many times have been frozen, and if we made them more doable, I think they would get their steps.
I agree with you, and you're gonna... We're gonna talk about that in just a second.
Commissioner Boyce had his hand up as well.
Don't worry, thank you. Just give me another example of maxing out too soon. Is that on the seven year? Did he get that right?
Actually, the Roadmaster is the one who suggested that, so I could have him explain that. Rich, do you wanna just comment on that?
Employees max out too soon.
Well, if you have... Currently, we have six steps at 5%. If you go to six steps at 3%, you end up at a lower rate at year six than you would've at 5%. So my thought was, if you're getting 3% for six years, and those... You're losing 2% a year, so add some additional steps to cover those percents that you lose. Otherwise, I'll end up in the same boat, where I'm not competitive in hiring people.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So, to address that concern, the concern about the 3% between steps, and we're hearing that the unions are not liking that, and of course, the unions do have to approve this in the end, after the board adopts it. I guess the way I look at it is, we're not getting steps. We have 5%. We're not giving them, we're not even giving 2.5%. We can't afford it. We need, in my opinion, we need something affordable to ensure that we continue to give steps. I think, can't speak for past boards, but I think they're looking at it and saying, "Oh my God, 5% between steps for all these employees, there's no way we can do it." That the 3% is something more manageable, and something that we can realistically do. And, as far as the longevity, if the longevity is changed to 3.25, like we just looked at, there is a continual increase all along, and so there's not that max out. They're getting that... They're at least getting that 3% every single year, versus nothing. And then they're getting the 3.25, and then they're getting the 3.5.
Commissioner Gold?
Yeah. It's twice today. Sorry about that.
Excuse me, Julie?
We are gonna remember.
Oh, I remember.
Yes. Julie was... Julie Swift was just indicating, one of the things that they're not happy with is that they... For... They get frozen then, right? So, from year seven to 10, they're gonna be frozen at that 3.25%. Unless there's a colon. I think the board has been pretty generous about colas, at least since I've been here. I know it hasn't always been that way. And then, so extending the steps would allow them to earn money longer. However, this is consistent with what we have right now. We have six steps now.
Commissioner Gold?
I thought on the 3% was the rate of inflation has not been that for years and years, so according to the government, so...
I also think, you know, before we get too far into this, I do think that looking at a wage study and budgeting for a professional team to come in and do it is something the board needs to consider doing, like every five years, to make sure your employees are not falling far behind, and that could help address some of those issues as well. Yeah.
You're gonna have to step up.
Step up?
Why don't you just take one of the seat and hold on to it, one of the mics that were there? You got it.
So, I... Julie Swift, payroll and HR, I kinda agree with Rich, though. I mean, while your starting salaries at the bottom of the range are higher, when you top out, your top-out range might be lower than your competition. You know, after six years, if they're escalating at 5% other places, and we're only escalating at three, we're gonna end up behind the eight ball on those people that have been here for any length of time.
And that's why I think you have to commit to doing a wage study every five years. You know, the last one was 20 years ago? 2002, or when was it? 2002?
But doesn't it look better if we do one every year at 3% than skipping steps for two or three years at a time, like has just happened in the past few years?
It's happened in a lot of years.
So, I mean, I'm not sure that other counties aren't doing the same. You know, they're... Yeah, they're giving 5%, but they skip next year, you know?
And they're not all giving 5%. There's one that I looked at was actually doing 2% between steps.
So it's kinda nice to know you're gonna get that 3% every year, and try and stand with that, you know?
I'll keep moving. Those are all things, I think, you know, good conversation, good things to look at as we go through, and might have to adjust.
That's why it's a workshop.
That's why it's a workshop. Coordinators becoming exempt was the next thing. It allows the coordinators, who are putting in a lot of time, to not have to claim their overtime or track their hours. Many times, they can't take off, there's too much work, and we end up paying them out for the time. It saves county money by not having to pay them overtime, and it results in employees not being forced to take time off when they don't feel they should be taking off. And I've seen that where people are, it's just a really busy time, and I'm like, "You have to take time off." And they're like, "I can't, Julie." And I'm like, "I'm sorry, you have to." And they're like, "I can't." And we end up paying them out. Whereas if you get rid of that, they're being paid their 40 hours regardless.
Did you do an approximate cost savings on that, on an annual basis?
No, we didn't run that, but we could.
Okay, I'd like to see that number.
Sure. So, all departments, as far as the wages, all department are reviewed and final, with the exception of two positions in the assessor's office. The assessor and I are still going back on just two of his positions, and we're really close, but we're not in agreement yet. So, today, we're just gonna skip over those two, but in the final, you'll... We'll have some final numbers for you on that, okay? Before the meeting, I did hand out to you copies of what I'm gonna go through on the slides, and I do wanna let you know that there were two errors. Julie just caught them. William Seber, we missed it, his starting wage was off. Doesn't impact what we're doing today. It still shows the recommended wage doesn't change. And then, in the district attorney's office, we missed a part-time person.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that the board understands, I don't... You know, I want this to be out there, that what we're looking at right now is based on this current fiscal year's numbers, and if we adopt this, these numbers need to change by 3%, okay? So these are based on, basically, this past year.
1920 and not 2021.
Right. So we have to make that cost of living adjustment to these numbers. So whatever you see today, or whenever the board... Whatever you see today, we're gonna... If this does go to the board for approval after July 1st, the numbers are gonna increase by 3%. I don't want anyone to be surprised by that. All right, so let's just get started. So, what I've done is, I have the administrative services department, that... And I'm following the departments that are... Or the funds, basically, that are in the budget that we just approved on Monday. So administrative services includes finance, it includes legal, it includes operations, JJ, and it includes the facilities maintenance department. On here, I have their current wage and step, what they're at right now. I have their current rate based on 40 hours of work. And then, the proposed... So this... For this scale rate here, I have to say, all of them do work 40 hours, except for the top three. And their... So their current rate is at... Based on 37 and a half hours, and you'll see those numbers at the bottom of the chart. We have the proposed range and step, the proposed rate for the... For a new employee, and then we have the proposed range and step for this employee. In other words, what we do is, we find out where they... So if they're a J, for example, we go across the chart, we find out where they are on that J, and we bring them to the next highest salary, and that's what their recommendation is. The board had asked at the last meeting, they wanted to see the difference from the current pay. So if you look at the far right columns with Carrie Dexter, her new salary would be a 452 difference from her current salary, but that's based on a 37 and a half hour week. If she was working 40 hours, the difference would be 255. This is where we talk about those As and Bs, right? She's an A, she's an entry-level position, so you're gonna see a bigger increase needed there. Sina Crook, based at... And Sina is a little tricky, because Sina, based on 37 and a half hours, you'd see a 313 increase. If she was working 40 hours, it'd look like a 78, 97 increase. But one of the things I wanna talk about with Sina is, she is kind of an exception in this whole thing, because last year, when the accountant left, we started giving her 10% to cover accountant duties. So, she's been getting that 10% all year, so really, what... Her new salary is pretty much in line with where we were paying her, trying to get her to, right? So the new salary says she should be at 3,811, and basically, she was making 3,850. So she was... That was pretty close, that was good on our part. I won't go into detail on this one. If you see any that are alarming or stick out, we should talk about them, but I just wanted to explain how the chart worked, okay? Commissioner?
Hi. Just assuming on the proposed monthly rate for new employee, fifth one over, and then the number seven, proposed salary, is that a raise from the monthly rate to the salary for this employee, per month?
Which employer are you looking at?
Second to last one, proposed salary, this employee.
Terry Williams?
Well, he's just using the column. He just wants you to explain the column.
Right, so the proposed salary for this particular county employee, based on what they're making now, and then you put them in that chart, like if they're a J1 or whatever, this is what... This column is what they would make if the board approves this.
Monthly?
Monthly, these are monthly.
Okay, thank you.
Some of them are hourly rates, though, so you... But it'll indicate hourly.
Sure.
I do have to say, before we move off of this chart, I followed... When I did the comparables, I did all the comparables, there's only two positions where we did not follow the comparables, and that is council and myself. And the board can take action on this if they want. Basically, the comparables showed that council and myself should be making $10,100 a month. We talked about this last time. I didn't feel that was practical for our county, so those were reduced significantly. I did give you a chart earlier. It still put council and myself at the top of the chart as the highest paying position, starting wages. But those were the two that did not follow the comparables, so... For assessment and taxation, the two that we discussed that Jim and I are still discussing are highlighted in yellow. Other than that, you can see the difference from current pay. You'll see a big jump again at the bottom. Look at the bottom of the chart. You'll see Lauren Hopkins, Tammy Schnapp, and Amanda Manazi. And again, you're seeing that big difference, because those starting wages are off so bad. You know, it's telling us our starting wages right now are $652 off for each of those positions. So those three are gonna see a really big increase. Does that make sense? Okay. For clerk and recording, they do have two employees that are working 37 and a half hours. They actually are looking at employing another person in that department. The board hasn't approved it yet, but when that goes through, we'll add them to the chart as well. And again, you're seeing, these are A-level employees, so you're seeing that big difference, again, $250 a month. So, community development is a really big department, so I broke that into several slides. The first one, it deals with the planning and the building safety side of it. And throughout this study, what you're gonna see, there's only two employees that it is not recommended they get a raise. One is Becky Crockett. She does a wonderful job. It's just that her comparables showed that she was already at the top, and so she should be frozen. She would still get the 3% colas, but she would be frozen.
Yes, Commissioner Boyce?
May I interrupt for just a second? I'm sure when you do comparables, you're doing counties same size as Curry County.
So it's the same things we talked about at that other meeting. You look at similar size, but there's other things you look at too, like number of housing units, unemployment, land mass, things of that nature, so...
Thank you.
Just real quick, at the bottom, you'll see Ryan Baxter is the one we mentioned before that was off so far. Requires the building certifications and all those classes and everything, and so that one, we need to get up where it should be.
But he wasn't qualified when he came here, correct?
He was not, but he did take the courses. He started out... He did not start out in this position. He started out more as a trainee level, and then, once he... And then we had him pass certi... Take classes, he did get his first certification. So now, actually, that's a good point, Commissioner. Actually, the timing of it is probably pretty good, because he just got his certification this past month.
Right.
Second part of the community development, emergency management, code enforcement, veterans, and economic development, and parks. Now, these are pretty self-explanatory. Just a note at the bottom there, and I'll go back, we talked about this last time. Cindy Ashby, right now, who is the administrative assistant down in community development, she is taking classes right now to become a permit tech. Once she receives that certification, there should be an adjustment. And then Penny Hudgens is another one that we have to adjust. She's been working out of class for... Julie and I were going back and forth, or I've been looking at the dates today to find out when she actually started working out of class, but we need to make some adjustments for her as well. What we did with Sina was, she had an extra 10% for taking on those extra duties. We probably should do that with Penny, before we implement, figure out where she's on the scale. I just have to go back and figure out what date that was, when she really took over as the office manager down there.
Good catch.
District attorney, this is the one that I indicated, we missed, Amber Hughes. Amber is... She's currently at $2,580 a month. She's basically a part-time employee, so hers will be added and adjusted, and it'll show up in your final paperwork on this.
Was that $2,580?
Yes. A month. Again, she's a .8 FTE. So I have to add her information in there. But you can see right now, it's... Just looking at the DA one that's vacant, you can see why we're having some issues recruiting. You know, it's... The study tells us that we're $486 off from what we should be offering as a starting salary. Some of them, as you can see, don't go up too much. I mean, when you look at this as a monthly increase, they're really not getting that much money. I mean, it's really a shame we didn't do something sooner. Juvenile department, again, Lena Rup, new employee, level A, we're seeing a bigger jump. Really, nothing alarming there. I think they're all pretty very modest increases on there. Public health is an interesting one. We found Shree Ward is... She needs to be adjusted. Shelby Kelly, who is the... She serves WIC, environmental health, and Shree Ward in administration. Hers is off quite a bit, it needs to be adjusted. One of the interesting things here is that Kent Downs, who is the environmental health coordinator, he is one that will be frozen. We're seeing that he's actually overpaid, based on the comparables, by $793. And, just for the heck of it, I wanted to go... Remember when we were looking at first hiring him, our first offer, and then it wasn't high enough, because we had to take him at the same rate from CCH? So we had to adjust it to the salary you see here. Originally, what we offered him was $4,109. And, we're... On here, it says it should be $4,200, so we were pretty...
$89 or $91, oh yeah.
We were pretty close on what the comparables tell us on that one.
All right.
So, roads. Some people in roads go up a lot, some people not so much. You can see it here. Jonathan Wills, basically, he is... He's a senior accountant. He has the same title as Sina, some little different duties that need to be adjusted when we go through and actually revise the job descriptions when we're done, but the mechanic, you've heard Rich say, "I'm having a hard time recruiting, it doesn't pay enough." This is why it's telling us that that job descri... Or that pay is off by $437, which might be why we can't fill that position. Just looking for any big thing you might see here. Ally Peck, Colby Hanks, you can see, again, you're at that A level, starting off, they're off by 300. It seems like the further you get down the steps, the less the increase that's needed. Yes?
I kinda have a question of Rich. With these new salaries, would you have an easier time recruiting? I mean, relative to other entities that are available around here?
I believe so. I'm not sure that... All these rates are, you know, in line. I was pretty much understanding at the beginning of this process, you know, the road ten had increases in cost of living for nine years, and that we're like 10 to 12% behind overall, but I'm just seeing right now, it's just a few places that were really behind. But, you know, like the accounting position, I wasn't able to fill that competitively, this shows that. And mechanic, this shows that. And it also shows that my entry level, road worker one positions, would get a good boost. So, it all helps.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's it on the wage data, so I just have to share some observations with you that I've seen as we've went through this. I think the board needs to commit, and I know you cannot commit future boards, but hopefully, as long as you're here, you can commit to this. I do think the board needs to commit to giving steps every year. "The lack of increases have destroyed morale and trust in the commissioner's office. Employees do not feel valued." Sorry, that's just the way it is, and I think you're aware of that, so we need to do what we can, and hopefully, this board supports that. You're paying good wages to people without the required education or experience sometimes. These wages are based... Many of them are based on... The job description will say you need a college degree or equivalent experience, but because we can't find people to fill those, we often settle for people that don't have those. So I think we need to improve our advertisement. I know Commissioner Pash, you and I've talked before about, you know, software that markets it nationally. We need to widen our net beyond Curry County on many of these jobs, to get the most qualified people we can. And, we need to invest in training our managers. Sometimes I think, you know, poor management can result in higher turnover, so we need to work on some of that. This morning, we talked about different training that we need, you know, training new employees on credit cards and invoices and claims. There's just ongoing training that we need to do throughout the entire organization. And Julie and I talked earlier in the week about some training opportunities that are available for some other... available for some other things, but I think we need to continually look at ways to improve and more training to give, to make sure... We're on a cycle, to make sure people are being reminded and they're not forgetting things that they learn, or they're being kept up to date on the laws that are coming out.
Commissioner Gold?
As far as training, do you think it would be possible to do a checklist that each manager would have to go through, and the training of the people in their department, and then make sure that that's reviewed at least on a yearly basis, to make sure that they're up to date? Because the late credit card thing, just...
I think that's... I think that's a really good idea. You know, we did talk about the salary study would be depend... The increases would be dependent on them passing their personality evaluation, and that could be part of the evaluation process, so...
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just looking at the top of the paragraph there that said morale has been destroyed, despite, just in the last two, three years, the work we've done to bring everybody up to more of an even... I mean, I certainly understand the recruiting process, and we have a lot of gaps to fill. We've tried to fill a lot of positions that, in the last four years, that, I mean, you've heard me reference before, we've lost 100 employees during that four-year period. We're trying to recover on that. Do you think the morale right now, when you say, is it past tense destroyed, or is it present tense, that you're sensing?
I sense that it's improving. I think it's improving. I think it's improving, because the employees are hopeful that this board is gonna do something about it and continue to give them raises every year. I think that, just based on the negotiation, union negotiations, I think we've restored a little hope. I think that, you know, leadership has a lot to do with it. We have to lead by example, and I think the employees are seeing that we are trying to find revenue wherever we can to make sure that we fulfill our promise to get them a raise. So, I think that we're doing good right now, but I think it has been pretty bad for... I think it's been pretty bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that is... That's what I have. I guess, any questions you have? Any comments? Any comments on, for example, Council's salary? I mean, he's taken a pretty big cut in there.
Well, I'd like to say firstly, thank you, because I know you spent a lot of nights in here, 10, 11 o'clock at night, to get this thing finished up, so a lot of hard work went into this, and it's just... It's appreciated. Something I'd like to know if we could, from this, if HR, Julie, if you could produce for us total, if we were to, let's just say carte blanche the thing, what's... Bottom line, what's it gonna cost the county on an annual basis with PERS and everything else?
Well, that's what I was working on before I came in here, and when I discovered that we missed the person in the DA's office, so I'm trying to get that for you. I'm working on it as far as from the master payroll aspect, on what it would look like as a difference when you first adopt it. If we wanna go through the budget and steps and all that kinda stuff, that's gonna be a longer process to get everybody in, but that's what I'm working on, so I can tell you what the difference will be.
Perfect.
And I would have to say, Julie, I'm glad you didn't do it, didn't get it done, because if we do change that longevity to the 3.25, you would've had to redo a lot of those numbers, so maybe it's a good thing that I didn't ask you until yesterday to run those numbers towards the end of the day.
Plenty of time.
Plenty of time. Yeah.
That's really all I had on it for now. I mean, I'd like to see those numbers, and I'd also like to see the... What was the other change I asked for? I forget right now.
Can we... This was very helpful. You know, you gave us the charge and the different departments. Can we also have that, just to read it again, and...
Sure.
I think you may have already sent it. Honestly, I'm not...
Sure, I can send it to you. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. I think that was the consensus of the board, as far as the steps goes, to keep them at three on an annual basis versus five, and maybe you get one, maybe you don't.
Okay, and then the 3.25 for the first longevity?
Yeah, I think we all agreed with that.
Okay. Okay. So, I will... What... You know, next week, we have a short meeting, if we even have it. We don't have much on the agenda so far. After July 1st, of course, that cola kicks in, so what I'm... What I'm gonna do is, Julie and I'll clean this up, we'll add the 3 percent, and we'll bring it to the board, and Jim and I'll find an agreement on those other two positions, and then we'll bring it to the board for adoption at their first meeting in July, if we can.
Yeah, if we can get the numbers, though, before then, that'd be great.
Okay. I'll get them to you as soon as we have them, okay?
Perfect. That's all I have.
Likewise. Good work, Julie and Julie.
Anything else? Nothing further? Workshop is adjourned.